Listen only mode.
Okay, let's call a meeting to order. This is City Council Business Meeting Wednesday, June 17th, 2020. Please, let's rise with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Yes.
Councilman Skorinji.
Present.
Councilwoman Resonetti.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilman Strong.
Present.
President Scanlon. That's six here, one absent, Scanlon.
Okay, so we have a proclamation tonight being presented by Councilwoman Riley. Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Resonetti. Again, everyone, we are celebrating with our youth in the community. We celebrated last time we convened, the graduating class of Seton High School. And tonight, we are recognizing the students that are graduating from Binghamton High School, and we are excited about it. This is a momentous occasion because they've overcome some obstacles. But the good thing is, Binghamton students are overcomers and they are able to achieve any goal they set. And so, here we are with this resolution, this proclamation. So I'm gonna show it. It's very pretty. Again, last time couldn't really see it, but I can send it out to everyone. Our intention is to have this, it used to be on the graduation pamphlet, but because our approvals are shifting, all of us will be kept in the loop as to how they will use this. However, I'm going to read it really quickly. Whereas the Binghamton High School Class of 2020 will embark on a new, and on new and exciting chapters in their lives after graduation. Whereas these students have shown determination, grit, and unwavering resolve to complete their graduation requirements during these challenging and unprecedented times due to the coronavirus pandemic. Whereas these students are to be commended for their creative efforts to successfully earn their diplomas through unusual and diverse circumstances. The Binghamton High School Class of 2020 consists of 340 graduates, many of whom are graduating with remarkable diplomas, including 124 advanced placement graduates, 16 international baccalaureate graduates, 20 project lead the way graduates, and 130 Rhodes-Sirling graduates. Whereas members of the senior class have been selected to attend institutions of higher learning throughout the world, including Ivy League institutions, SUNY, and many public and private colleges. Members of our senior class, the senior class of 2020, will go on to serve their country in the United States military, including six graduates enlisting in the Marines Naval Academy, Army, Navy, and Air Force. Whereas members of the class of 2020 led many of the athletic teams to success. The boys varsity basketball team won the Section 4 championship. So therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Common Council of City of Binghamton in the County of Rome in the state of New York, on behalf of all the residents of the city of Binghamton, do hereby proclaim that the 17th day of June 2020 shall be in honor of the Binghamton High School Class of 2020. So let's give them a round of applause, you guys, because this has, this is the year like none of this. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman Riley. And really, I mean, what else can be said after everything that you just shared with us about this class? Every year, Binghamton High School schools just go beyond from the class before. And certainly, this year has been a challenging one, like we've said before. This class, actually, for the most part, these kids were born the year of 9/11. You know, was thinking about that the other day. They really don't know the world prior to that. And now they're graduating during challenging times. And I've said it before, and I really believe it in my heart, that they are being groomed for really amazing things. And I just want to take just five seconds here to, for a special shout out to my own graduate, my youngest, my son Santino Resonetti, the love of my life. He's a great kid, big heart, and I know that he's gonna have a huge part to play in changing the world. So congratulations to you, Santino, and congratulations to you all. Okay.
Hold on.
Moving on. Yes. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to congratulate the graduates. I love Binghamton High School. We have a great high school. We have a great school system. My children all graduated from Binghamton High School. And that school produced, in my opinion, some three great people, so. My wife had something to do with it too, but anyway, I think the school is fabulous and congratulations. Congratulations to the parents, because it ain't easy, and thanks very much.
Okay, so moving on. Now we go to approval of minutes. Councilman Strong?
Thank you, Councilwoman Resonetti.
Yes.
I ask for approval of the minutes from the June 3, 2020 Business Meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So now we're moving on to public comment. Grace?
Okay, for public comment, please call 607-772-7101. Again, the number is 607-772-7101.
So we'll just give it a minute?
Yep, we'll give it a little bit.
Grace, this is Sharon. Did anyone submit any emails to the city clerk or council members who wish to participate in public comment today?
Yes, we do have one letter that I will read in after we wait for the calls, if that's okay?
Well, let's go ahead and start reading that now while we wait.
Okay. This letter is from Barry Transu. It was to Councilwoman Friedman. He lives in the 4th District. He says, "I need your help. In fact, thousands in downtown Binghamton do. It is my understanding Weiss Market is now legally able to sell fireworks to anyone and of any age with no permit needed anymore to discharge these incredibly loud and sedentary devices legally within the city of Binghamton limits. I am also told Weiss will be selling these year-round. For the last several days, almost two weeks' time now, and especially nighttime, going far into the early morning hours, downtown Binghamton residents, and I assume those around the city of Binghamton, have been treated to a nonstop barrage of very loud, extremely annoying, what sound to me like mortar sounds. I'm a 69-year-old USMC veteran and have been dealing each day with PTSD issues since discharge from the military. I characterize these fireworks as incoming mortar sounds, because that is exactly what they sound like to me. To me, they are anxiety and panic-inducing, high-volume sounds that are assaulting my auditory senses. I've asked my physician at the VA to prescribe a tranquilizer to help me get through living downtown. It is that loud, but it's also just as loud in numerous other parts of Binghamton, and I expect that BPD has had numerous complaints filed. Who passed such totally insulting legislation that has made insomniacs out of Binghamton's residents? Is this a new city, county, or state law? Why is Weiss the sole provider of fireworks in Binghamton? And do they have a permit to sell them? This is an everyday night disturbance. Why isn't the Binghamton noise ordinance kicking in? I seek your input and assistance as my councilwoman. We are tired living downtown with such wretched noise levels. To add a nightly barrage of dangerous combustibles to the mix within residential areas seems ludicrous to me. We seek a little less noise. Let's see if these are sold legally and why. Let's find out if we can stop the sale and use the such loud noise makers in the city of Binghamton. Regards, Barry."
Thank you, Grace. And you can read that number again. I will say we had a comment that the chat box was inoperable, so if you are trying to use chat box, please call in instead the number that Grace is about to read. Thank you.
Okay, for public comment, call 607-772-7101. Again, it's 607-772-7101.
Do you think we should give it a few more seconds?
I think that's good. Thank you, Grace. If the president or president pro temp wants to state that we're closing the public hearing, go ahead.
So we'll close public hearing for right now, and we will be moving on into a second read legislation with introductory resolution 2046, considering planning. Councilman Strong?
Thank you. I ask for City Council to consider introductory resolution 20-46, a resolution authorizing the city to accept payment and for the mayor to execute an agreement with New York State DOT for acquisition of additional property for the Vessel Ave bypass, pin 9048.26.221.
Any comments or questions?
I do. Madam President, I need a second.
Councilmember Burns, do you have a question or comment?
I have a comment, yeah. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but people on the South Side, on Vessel Ave near that Ivanhoe where this land is going, they don't want it, and so I support them. They don't want their land taken from them. And it occurred to me before the meeting that with all the money the state has, if they really want it to be fair and not just take what they want, they could offer, and they might get, they could offer to buy the doctor's entire property. It's a historic, gorgeous property. It's unbelievably beautiful. They could offer enough money to make him happy to buy his, buy him out, then take that property off of the deed and then put it back on the market to see if they could get their money back. If, if, if what they say is true, everything's fair market and great, then they would lose nothing except that little piece of property. Anyway, I'm gonna be voting no against it for the reasons that I've been saying all along. Thank you.
Okay, so I think this is the second for the motion, right? Needs a second this? Okay, is that what you were trying to say, Councilwoman Riley, earlier? Okay. So I need a second?
Second.
Um, any other comments? No?
I have a comment. This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to say on the record that I agree. I agree with Councilman Burns. I very much admire the fact that he is really fiercely representing the interests of his constituents, and I'm happy that he brought this to, you know, this, not a discrepancy, I guess, like issue to our attention. I will be voting yes, just because although I agree with the, the, the issues with the eminent domain and the fact that, you know, there's nothing we can do about the Department of Transportation, it seems a little bit wild to me. But I will be voting yes, just because I feel like since it's going to be happening anyway, I think we should accept the money. But in principle, I do want to say on record, I.
Any more questions?
Call the question, Madam President.
Person to be called. Roll call, please.
Hey, Councilman Skorinji.
Nay.
Councilwoman Resonetti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Nay.
Councilman Strong.
Nay.
President Scanlon's absent. So we have three ayes, three nays. Councilman Skorinji, Councilwoman Burns, Councilman Strong, one absent, President Scanlon.
That fails to pass.
Right.
Sorry, what?
Can you say that again, Sharon?
That fails.
That resolution fails.
Okay, yep, that fails to pass.
Okay. So now we're going to move on into the preferred agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything from the preferred agenda before we move on? Say none. Grace, you will introduce each item, correct?
Correct.
Yep, and if people want to comment in between each one, I'll pause. Introductory ordinance 20-53, considered in finance, strong, an ordinance to amend the FY45 CDVG budget to allocate funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development CARES Act related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Question or comments?
Call the question. Oh, sorry.
No, you're right.
My fault. Sorry.
Somebody called.
Introductory resolution 20-47, considered in planning, a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with volunteers improving neighborhood environments by, for FY45 CDVG funds.
Comments or questions?
Introductory resolution 20-48, considered in finance, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Fairview Recovery Services for use of CARES Act COVID-19 relief funds for upgrades to the coordinated entry and homeless management info system.
Questions, comments?
Introductory resolution 20-49, considered in finance, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Volunteers of America for use of CARES Act COVID-19 funds for shelter sanitation.
Comments or questions?
Introductory resolution 20-50, considered in finance, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the YWCA of Binghamton and Rome for use of CARES Act COVID-19 relief funds for street outreach.
Questions or comments?
Introductory resolution 20-51, considered in finance, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Family Enrichment Network for use of CARES Act COVID-19 relief funds for homeless prevention services.
Questions or comments?
Introductory resolution 20-52, considered in planning, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into supplemental number-two agreement with Barton and LeJudas for USACO NYSDC pipe conduit inspection and maintenance rehab work, phase two.
Any questions or comments?
Introductory resolution 20-53, considered in planning, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into supplemental number-one agreement with Barton and LeJudas for final design permitting and bidding phase engineer services for the Moeller Street stormwater pump station project.
Questions or comments?
Madam President, motion to accept all of the agenda-listed items on the agenda.
There's two more.
Yeah.
There's two more. Oh, there's only one on the non-preferred. I'm sorry.
Yep, all right. Introductory resolution 20-54, considered in planning, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into supplemental number-one agreement for the NYSDOH lead service line replacement project with GHD Consulting Services, Inc.
Any questions or comments?
Okay, last one. Introductory resolution 20-55, considered in, sorry, considered in planning, a resolution approving a commercial estate improvement loan for the Binghamton Local Development Corporation to the Garland LLC in an amount not to exceed $58,875 for the renovations to 116 Washington Street.
Any questions or comments? This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Can I make a quick comment? I just wanted to say I'm really excited by this project. I didn't mean to say, I think at the work session, I sounded like I was a little hesitant. I'm really, really excited about this, so I, yeah, I just wanted to say that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the items for the preferred agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Councilman Skorinji.
Aye.
Councilwoman Resonetti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley.
Woman Riley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Aye.
It's echoing a little bit.
Oh, aye.
Okay. Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Strong.
Aye.
President Scanlon. That's six ayes, one absent, President Scanlon.
Okay, so moving on, we have one item left. Introductory ordinance, this is on the non-preferred agenda. Introductory ordinance 2054, considered in finance. Councilman Strong?
Hey, thank you. I ask for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance 20-54, an ordinance to amend the 2020 refuse capital budget to the dispatcher position payout.
Second.
Any discussions on this? Any comments or questions?
Call the question.
Question to be called? Grace, roll call, please.
Councilman Skorinji.
Aye.
Councilwoman Resonetti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley.
Nay.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Strong.
Aye.
President Scanlon. That's five ayes, one nay, Riley, one absent, Scanlon.
Okay, so we're moving on to communication from council members. Let's start with Councilman Strong tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Resonetti. There's so, I guess there's so much to say. I don't even know, know what to say. I appreciate all you guys. I appreciate the feedback, the communication, the back and forth. I think it's been healthy and good. Also want to echo from beginning, I didn't speak up earlier, but both for Seton Catholic in Binghamton, I want to congratulate those, those graduates. He and my daughter graduated from Seton a couple years ago. We have two great schools in the city of Binghamton. And, and clearly, though, this, this class, what they've had to go through over the last few months and had to forego so many neat things at the end of, at the end of their school year. I just commend them. I'm sure it was difficult, but I'm sure they handled it with grace and dignity. And oddly enough, the oddball things are the things you kind of always talk about, not the things that go normal. So probably something years from now, they'll be able to talk about, laugh about, and, you know, and discuss. So I just want to echo the, the congratulations to them. As we move forward, it's probably, probably a good time. We get a little bit of an extra break. As we move forward to probably discussions, you know, when we come back from the kind of the current climate, I just, you know, I saw some, some correspondence about, you know, ideas. And I just, I just want to say from my perspective that I just, I think that they will be substantive. I just, I know that they will be. I just want to say that I, you know, when we talk about, you know, especially law enforcement, police, and things like that, I just hope that we can talk about things in a way that will improve and is for the betterment of everybody and is not, but is not, how do I want to say it? I don't want to, I don't want to entertain anything that feels like it's punitive in some way, especially to our police, unless it's justified in some way by some statistic that our police have done. I just want to echo, I've seen horrible things happen, and I don't condone any of it. But I don't know that that's happened here, and I hope we can keep our, while we have to look at the broader, what's going on across the country, I hope we can also focus on what's happening right here, where, where we're vested with the oversight, in some ways, maybe not oversight might, might be the wrong word, but vested with the decision-making and budget-making power of the city of Binghamton, that we look at what's best for, for our people and our city and our residents. And I think we will. I know we will. But I just wanted to mention that as we look at possible transfers or reallocations and using words like that, and also in respect to the prior council, but understanding that things have changed, things nobody could have perceived what, what we're dealing with. So I just want to say as we take this, this break, we get the extra week that we really reflect on what's going on and really consider what, you know, what might be coming down the pike and be willing to discuss that and make, make very good decisions for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Riley?
Good evening again, council members, my fellow council members, Councilman Strong. I thank you for that statement. I thank you for recognizing all that's happening in this world and for recognizing that we did reach out and send some information, knowing that our constituents are asking and waiting for some information. I look forward to the conversations. I think we have great conversations. I think we're able to deliberate and then move forward to create legislation that is representative of those we represent. So I look forward to that. I want to also highlight that today begins Waste and Recycling Workers Week. So our hats go off. We say thank you to our solid waste and our recycling team, because they have a heck of a job out there. So thank you, guys. It's important that we, again, recognize everyone that helps us maintain this beautiful city. I want to close just with a reminder that we will have a District 3 mini-town hall, because again, we are not able to provide the lengthy face-to-face engagement that we so desire, but recognizing the perils that face us until we know we are fully cleared. We can wait for something like that. So if you are a member or resident within District 3 and you did not receive that information, please feel free to email or call me. I look forward to speaking with you. Everyone, have a great week. And since we are on break, I'll see you then.
Thank you, Councilwoman Riley. I think I skipped Councilman Skorinji. You're next.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. Just a quick apologies to you, Madam President, and to everyone. Sorry, I jumped a little bit ahead there on the, on the agenda. Congratulations to all of our graduates. Go out there, change the world, come back home, and make a difference here. And to those six who have enlisted, thank you for your service, to you, your family, and your loved ones, and Godspeed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Friedman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Resonetti. Congratulations to the graduates of Binghamton High School. At my day job, I, I teach sometimes on my guest speaker in the health classes, so. It feels, you know, I'm not a classroom teacher, but, you know, I've gotten to know some of the, the seniors this year and in, you know, in the past, so very exciting and congratulations. There, there is a lot going on. I think it is safe to say that, you know, both in Binghamton and across the nation and, and in the world. And I know that we, as city council representatives, have been elected by our constituents. We care very deeply about the safety and prosperity of our districts and our city. And I think it's really important that we, you know, we listen to a lot of people who are, you know, a lot of our constituents are reaching out with this yearning for.
you know, a lot of our constituents are reaching out with this yearning for change. We're kind of, we've reached, in some senses, we've reached a boiling point. And, you know, I, I'm thankful to my, my Democratic colleagues who, you know, we were able to put forth a proposal or some, some proposals that we think will help change Binghamton for the better, make it safer, allow our constituents to, you know, feel, both feel safer and, and be safer. I think, you know, we can, we can look at what other cities are doing and have evidence. You know, there, there are some things that we can, we don't need to guess how it, how it will turn out. We can look at other cities and see what they're doing and, and how it's working out for them. Because I think a, a lot of people are feeling like something's got to give, that we've been trying the same things over and over and over again, and they don't seem to work. So hopefully we can, we can get creative, work together and find solutions to problems that, you know, before, before they become disastrous is, is what I hope. I, you know, I, I have hope for us and I, I look forward to working with you all, my colleagues on council. And I don't think I have said this on the record, but I do want to say that I, I, with my whole entire heart, believe that black lives matter. And I think that we need to, you know, for too long, there are so many systems in this country that operate under the pretense that they, that black lives do not matter. And I think that we, we as a city and a council can show that we, we, you know, we believe that and think we can, we can put our actions to back that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you very much. First of all, the fireworks. It's a problem. It's a problem on the South Side. It's obviously a problem over with the Councilwoman Friedman's district. And I got calls, and I don't get many, I gotta say. And two of them was about these fireworks. And I can hear them from my house. So a couple of nights I would drive down by the, I can't find it. You can hear it, but you can't figure out where it's coming from. I don't even want to call. They want me to have the police do something about it. But I can't even tell them where I'm hearing it, where it's, where it's from. But it does, it's, it's very distracting. You might, it sounds like a gunshot, you know, like, oh my God, what's going on? And they do it at 10, 11 o'clock at night, you know? And so I think it is worth looking into about why, I never heard, it used to be outlawed when I was a kid. Why is it suddenly they can sell fireworks like that? Anyway, I liked what everybody had to say. I liked what Phil said about all of us. As we move forward in this thing, I was listening to the governor today and he was saying that, you know, he's asking the cities to start, pretend that you're starting from scratch, take everything in. And, and the supposed, and, and we have, and we, city council, have to vote on a law. And, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to take, I don't want to, I don't, I don't think I have to pick a side here. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm for Binghamton and I'm for everybody in Binghamton. And I'm not, I don't want the, I don't want the police department to think that somehow this is going to be punitive against the police department. I'm certainly not, not that way. And, but I also want people to, the constituents to know that we're hearing what they have to say. So it's going to be a very interesting year. And so I'm going to try to keep my voice calm and not attack people. It's just, we all have ideas and then we'll, then we'll, we'll figure it out. I'll apologize ahead of time in that my voice sometimes I, you know, like the other night, I think that Ken may have thought that I'm mad at him or something, the way I'm talking, but I'm really not. That's just the way I am. And, and you can ask my wife Sue about that. You know, I just, I'm not mad. I wasn't mad. I was just talking, you know? So anyway, moving forward, I, I'm really not looking forward to it. Way, and I'm, I am and I'm not, you know, but it's going to be interesting. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council, Councilman Burns. I do also want to echo what pretty much everybody said. We do have a lot of work ahead of us, but I think that we can do it, can do it together. And I'm looking forward to some very constructive conversations with all. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
So moved.